Some of our schools have a very high proportion of one particular language group, such as Somali or children from the Punjab and so on. But in other cases, we'll have 20 different languages in a class with sometimes English being in the minority. So this is a situation that has been developing. And as a researcher in the field, I've been studying the reading process for many years, and I've been including all young children in these studies. And in the most recent years, I've been focusing on whether or not children have English as their first or second language, and looking at the patterns of results in the studies to see the extent to which these languages make a difference. It's been fairly typical that in some of our schools, between 25 and 50 percent of the children are reading lower than we might expect. And fairly often, people will say such things as, "Oh, well, these are children that have a lot of risk factors." For example, they have English as a second language, or they're from separated or divorced parents, or single parents, or the children are not read to at home, or they have few books in the home. And these kinds of explanations of the low literacy levels had been accepted by our boards of education often as reasonably, seemingly reasonable explanations of the difficulties. In my work with schools over the years, I've come to see that there might be some other factors involved. And when a report came out by Catherine Snow, looking at the extent to which children have home support for what's happening in the schools in terms of language, or in terms of reading and writing, and so on, their success at school would be affected. And basically, what this chart says is that children who are coming from homes where there is lots of support, they're read to, and they're talked to a lot in whatever language they're learning in school, and so on, they can be very supported in and grow in their literacy in schools where there's not, you know, a high degree of classroom support, not a high degree of structure, and so on. Whereas children who are coming from low home support situations, if they are in a classroom that has also a low level of classroom support, they're not being very successful at all. So what we have is an interaction between what we do in the classroom and what is happening in the homes. And as I looked at the kinds of schools that we were dealing with, I think it was, in many cases, fairly clear that what we were dealing with in these schools was often low classroom support programs. Too often, dealing with situations where although these were very experienced teachers and had our standard training and so on, there was often a lack of depth of knowledge. So teachers were becoming very strongly committed to particular ways of teaching without necessarily having the depth of understanding and being able to adapt the programs appropriately. Sometimes the programs were overly child-centered, they had poorly-defined curricula, sometimes there was little systematic teaching, although there was, you know, lots of interesting, good teaching going on, but it wasn't always systematic. And valuation criteria were vague. And often, in these situations, it was kind of accepted, "Well, these children don't have high support at home, they're not read to, they have English as a second language, and therefore, it seems, being accepted as reasonable, that these children were at risk and that we couldn't really do anything about it in the schools." Over the last five years, because of my interest in classroom practice and the research that I've been doing, I've been invited by a number of school boards to work with whole-school staffs to try to implement change that would impact on low literacy levels that we were seeing. And I had the opportunity of working with superintendents and principals and teachers in an intensive way to attempt to change these low literacy levels. And the kind of model that I used was a professional development model that involved raising the teacher's level of knowledge. This is just from one of the recent ones I've been working on, where the teachers made a commitment to have regular meetings and to read some professional materials that would provide the more in-depth foundation of knowledge that many of them did not have, and to view appropriate videos and develop and share materials, to become more aware of the materials that would improve their programs, and to focus on their time management in the classroom as part of an effective program, and so on. So we developed, in partnership with the school, I developed an in-service program. Now, I want to share with you a little bit of what I call the Balanced and Flexible Literacy Diet. What this is about is, as I approached these schools and was asked to work closely with them to attempt to raise literacy levels, I was well aware that teachers had very strong views and administrators had very strong views about how it ought to be done. And I wanted to get away from the slogans and the dogma that was around and approach this in a fresh way. And I came up with an idea from a little book that was called Canada's Food Guide, and I know you have sort of similar things in your school. And the basic principles that underlie the literacy diet are given here. I know you have your food pyramid, while we have our food rainbow. In order to grow and develop in literacy, there are certain food groups you need, and we know what they are, and you need them in appropriate proportions, and you need them every day, and so on. You get these food groups in a variety of ways. If you don't like broccoli, it's okay, along your whole life without having broccoli. Important thing is understanding what these food groups are. Now, we take this metaphor, which can go on and on, and I won't dwell on the details of it, but using this kind of metaphor, one can summarize key principles of having a healthy diet into these principles, that all food groups are essential, food from each group are required every day, there are many different foods in each group, stages of nutritional development are important, so we've got to look at what stage the individual's at, what emphasis they need, balance is a key, flexibility is necessary. And I think I'll move on to the end here. Well, some groups and individuals need special diets, and also, the role of the dietitian or chef or cook is very important. And just to make this point, have all of the right ingredients in a balanced literacy diet, but if they're put together by a hospital dietitian, no one is going to ask for more. Have essentially the same ingredients, put together by a gourmet chef with a little spice, and everybody's going to ask for more. And I think that the content of a balanced diet is very important, but also presentation is very important. We can also have a very good cookbook, and everybody can use the same cookbook and follow that cookbook, and everyone could get a balanced diet. But some individuals prefer to play the gourmet chef role, and in that case, they need to be very well-informed about dietary needs and so on to be able to do this well. But anyway, those are the basic principles that I shared with teachers in order to implement professional development. And we established some key components for a balanced literacy diet. And I won't go into all the food groups of a balanced literacy diet, but these are coming out of research. As a researcher, I've been very concerned that for many years, we've been learning more and more about what's involved in becoming literate, but much of that information has not been reaching education, has not been, you know, getting that theory into practice. And so, one can look at bodies of literature in relation to each of these food groups of a balanced literacy diet, and that's something that we did in our professional development. And the difference between this kind of, the literacy diet and a real food diet, is that you don't need all of the food groups at every stage of literacy development. There are certain stages of literacy development where you need lots of certain food groups, and then at later stages, you already have those food groups. Phonemic awareness is one of those food groups, for example. Once you've got it, you don't need to have, you know, more of that in your literacy diet. It's something that once you've got it, at a different stage, you don't need it anymore. But anyway, this general principle is what we used in our professional development. In order to evaluate effectiveness of implementing change in these schools and understand this is a long-term change process where schools are making a commitment that they will develop professionally together, that they will commit resources to getting appropriate materials, and so on. We've undertaken a number of studies, and I'm going to tell you about one study in one particular school where we have collected longitudinal data. We have five years of longitudinal data in that school, and it's particularly pertinent because there's a large proportion of children who have English as a second language in that school. And so, I'll tell you about that study, and just to mention that one of my doctoral students, Mary Ann Collins-Williams, will be completing her thesis, hopefully, in the next few months. And when she does, we will have some of the data that I'm sharing with you available for, you know, sharing in paper copy, but it's not available at this time, and other reports as well. Just to show you the situation in this school, when we set out to conduct the study, gathered baseline data in 1994, in the spring of 1994, on a number of tests, and I'll just show you samples of some of them. On a word recognition test, that's just how many high-frequency words can these children read. What we found, and what colleagues and I know Professor Linda Siegel had found similar patterns in various schools, that there were about 40 percent of the children who had scores in the lowest score range on this test, and relatively few in the highest range. Now, a year later, after the major change was in improving the quality of the instruction and in teachers spending more focused time, a situation we had is that 40 percent of children were performing in a very low score range in word recognition, and there were 20 percent in the highest range, so that we have a skewed distribution of scores. A year later, after the teachers had undergone professional development and they improved the quality of programming, including using more appropriate materials and a better balance in their literacy diet, the proportion of children at the low end had gone down to 12 percent from 40 percent. And a year later, still, when I was no longer involved with the school other than occasional dropping in, "How is it going?", but they continued their professional development, continued refining and improving their program, the proportion of children at the low end was slightly up, proportion of the children at the high end, which had been about 20 percent to start with, was over 50 percent of the children. The over 50 percent of the children were, you know, and these were the same children where over 50 percent of the children have English as a second language, so that the proportion of children at the high end had improved enormously. Now, just to show you, this is a summary data up to 1997, we also have 1998 data. In 1994, our baseline data on this test for grade-one children, there were about 44 percent of the children, the children's average score was about 44. A year later, their average score was about 56. A year later, their average score was nearly 80. It's almost double from what it had been two years earlier. And so, what we've seen is a progression of improvement. And this is not the same children, these are grade-one children, all of the grade-one children in the school in '94, in '95, in '96, and in '97. And what we've got is a progressive improvement, and I suspect the improvement is because of two things. One is that the children, because there's junior kindergarten and senior kindergarten in that school, have had more years of more focused instruction. And also, the teachers are getting better, they're getting more confident, and they're improving their instruction. But the key thing to observe is, in the 1997 data, we separated it into first language and second language. And what you can see, the red bar is first language, the blue bar is second language, and the second language children are doing just as well as the first language children. And if you look at their performance, they're right up there at almost double the scores that were the average for the school grade-ones two years or three years earlier. So what I found very convincing, we have a whole range of measures that show this, is that over, and these all look the same, but they're different measures, over and over, those red bars and blue bars look the same. And so, we found this very convincing, that if we improve time management and content of program, that children learn to read and write in these early stages. And I want to emphasize, I'm talking about data to do with kindergarten, grade-one, grade-two, grade-three.
All I, again, wanted to ask is, you had the Ratt scores, the Barnes, if you could just, I feel terrible because they can't see it, what the measure, you used all these various measurements and came out with the same data, if you could just tell them what the, when you do it.
Okay, in terms of the exact numbers?
Yeah, just.
Okay. For, I have used raw scores, and there's a reason I've used raw scores, because we have scores in grade-one, grade-two, and grade-three. So that if you use a raw score, you can say, you know, "This is what grade-ones did, and this is what grade-twos did." Now, see if I can make a comparison here that maybe makes the point. I think this one is quite a good one, and I'll tell you what these numbers are. So for the grade-one word recognition that I just showed you, that's raw scores, where it's gone from, you know, 43, 44 score up to 80 and above, the second language children are about 85, so it's about double over in 1994 and 1997 in grade-one. Now, if we look at the grade-two scores for this, what it shows is that the grade-twos in June of 1994 baseline were at about 80. That means that the whole grade-ones have gone up to a score equivalent what the grade-twos were when we started, so that all the grade-ones have come up equivalent to what the grade-twos were when we started. So, those aren't standard scores, but I mean, it's very clear, we've got double level of performance, and grade-ones are now at the level that grade-twos were to start with, including the second language grade-ones. Now, in terms of time, I know, spoke of 40 minutes, do I still have, I want to know how much time, 10 more minutes, okay, good. I want to tell you about another piece of our research. During the time when I was working with a number of school boards, doing this professional development work and so on, a British publisher came to my office at the university and showed me some materials that he had. And these were from a program called Jollyphonics. And when I looked at them, and I can, I've got something to hold up that the audience might see, well, just looked very cute, very cute, for little children, a phonics program. Now, within the context of this balanced literacy framework, something that has always concerned me is that although there are a number of food groups and the, you know, key ones that we come up with from research, that there are certain ones that have often been neglected historically, and that we get caught up in various phases in education where certain food groups, and the ones I've checked off here, phonemic awareness, letter-sound connections, letter formation, and spelling are food groups that too often have not been well-presented in literacy programs. And a problem for me as a researcher and a leader of educators has been that when people would ask me, "What's a good phonics program that we could, you know, add to our program?" Well, often, I would, you know, kind of look around, and there's something from the '70s that's boring, a lot of, you know, dull stuff. And I'd say, "Well, you know, you could use this, but, you know, it'll work. And this is like hospital food, it's got all the right stuff, but, you know, nobody's going to ask for any more." And when this program came along, I just thought visually, you know, the illustration and everything looked kind of fun, looked kind of neat. And so, I had a close look at it, and I taught with the publisher, who happened to be named Christopher Jolly. It's called Jollyphonics, and this is from jolly old England, and Christopher Jolly here has got the program. And I said to him, "I'm doing this big project in the schools, would you donate materials for me to evaluate this? Because I don't know if it's going to work, it looks nice." But he donated materials for 18 classrooms, and we understood a research project involving that as a piece of a balanced literacy diet. All the teacher really, really needs is a handbook that's called the Phonics Handbook. And there are lots of other pieces one can get, but in the first year when we were doing it, we had the Phonics Handbook and a couple of other little things to make it work, and that was about $35 Canadian per class, but he gave it to us for free. Program includes key components, learning letter sounds, learning letter formation, blending letter sounds, spelling tricky words, those words in art spelled the way they sound, and identifying sounds and words, phonemic awareness. And basically, what, each of the sounds of English is introduced through a little story. And so, for example, teacher tells the children a little story today when she's introducing them. It's, "Today was Peter's birthday, and his mother made him a very special cake. And she told that Peter's favorite animal is a pig. Made him a cake that was in the shape of a pig. And it was a pink party pig. Pink party pig. And this cake had candles on it, and these magic candles. Magic, because if you went, "Pah!", it went out, but because they were magic, they came right back up, so what do we have to do? Pah, etc., this kind of thing." And then children are taught how to form the letters, and they get some practice with the letters and so on. And pretty soon, when they have a few sounds, you can do some actions, and they'll know that's pin. And so, you can do blending without any letters and so on, lots of phonemic awareness. And so, it was a lot of fun. Anyway, we implemented this as part of our research project, and since that time, we've undertaken several large projects, and I have four doctoral students, all of whom have enormous piles of data on this. We've analyzed nearly all of the data, not all of it, but nearly all of it, and those four students will be finishing in the next few months. And so, there again, there will be more data. The paper that's at the back is from John Morgan, we have other papers as well. So there are four studies that are large-scale. These studies are all involving children in kindergarten, some in junior kindergarten and some in senior kindergarten. Junior kindergarten is for four-to-five-year-olds, senior kindergarten is five-to-six-year-olds, and these are half-day kindergartens. And first thing that I could tell you from, without looking at the data, that the kids love it. Here they are going, "Mmm!", and they very quickly are learning these sounds, but they're using them too, they're writing with them, and they're reading with them, and so on. There are no little books for reading with this program, add this on to whatever materials you have around that are appropriate. Now, I won't go into all the details, but one thing I will show you, these are data comparing first and second language in senior kindergarten, and the yellow is first language and the green is second language, just like in the other data, didn't make any difference, first and second language are the same. And I can show you with junior kindergarten, children who had Jollyphonics and children who didn't have Jollyphonics in terms of the recall of letter sounds, children learned what they were taught, second language children learned it just as well as the first language children. So the tall bars are the ones who had training, and the short ones are the ones who didn't, and the blue ones are second language, and the red are first language. This pattern of data has been consistently found in these studies. Here's an example, this is word recognition at the end of senior kindergarten. These are all senior kindergarten children after zero years, one year, or two years of Jollyphonics. Some of them had it in junior and senior, some of them had it in senior alone, and some of them had both junior and senior kindergarten, but they didn't have the program. And basically, what it shows is that children who had program for one year were slightly better in their word recognition than those who didn't have it. Those who had it for two years, junior and senior, did enormously well. And so, by the end of senior kindergarten, and the second language children, in fact, are a little higher than the first language children in their word recognition. And they're averaging sight recognition by the end of kindergarten of more than 20 words. And these are the same schools with very low literacy level to start with, they go right into grade-one with a high sight recognition vocabulary already. And I think I'd better come to my conclusions here, because you'll probably throw me out shortly, but needless to say, I have much more that I'd love to show. Conclusions that we would draw from the data that we have, first, that there is a very big need for increasing the level and depth of understanding and sharing of what we know from research with school administrators and teachers. And that this is not something that can be done piecemeal from our experience in this project, that you really need to have a shared willingness to butt on. You need more high-support classrooms that include more focused teaching, improved time management, teaching phonics systematically in a balanced and motivating program, and I emphasize both balanced and motivating, that we can begin literacy instruction earlier. And one of the things I want to say very strongly, that when we started working with the junior kindergarten children, it was not ever my intent to include junior kindergarten children in this project, but while I was working with these whole-school staffs, when I had those free materials, one of the teachers, who was a junior kindergarten teacher and who was participating in professional development, wanted the free stuff. And I said, "No, no, your children are just babies, and they don't speak English, come back next year." Well, she kept nagging away, and it turned out that a teacher in one of the grade-ones that we were working with had to leave and couldn't participate in the project, she gave the materials back, so I just gave them to the kindergarten teacher. Well, halfway through the school year, I could see enormous gains, and they were having a great time. And if there's an opportunity, I have a very short video that will show these kids in operation, and it convinced me, "Hey, we could start a little bit earlier here." So the following year, we implemented, I showed this video to a number of school principals, they encouraged teachers to implement it in their own schools, and the following year, I mean, they were, junior kindergarten teachers using it all over the place. And then I started thinking, these junior kindergarten children were acquiring the sounds very quickly, and then I started thinking, "When do children acquire sounds of their own language? When do they start getting their accents and, you know, when they're really little? That's when it's natural and normal for children to be acquiring sounds of language. That's, you know, children do it better than adults do in terms of acquiring the accents and so on." And so, their little brains were probably specially good at acquiring the sounds. So I think we can start, and should be starting, earlier, and that- And that those children that we are calling at risk, I think that part of the risk is that we're not providing enough well-supported, high-classroom support teaching. If they're at risk, we've got to increase what we provide in terms of structure and time management in the classroom. So for children who have English as a second language, I feel that that's very clear. But I want to differentiate between what's important for written language and what's important for oral language. I'm talking about the early stages of word recognition. And our evidence is very strong that they can acquire this, and that if they're coming from low-home support, low-home support situations, we need to provide better classroom support for them. Just if I could say one more thing here. I think that in terms of the reading process, that we have to recognize that there are two main pieces. There's a model, it's called the Simple View of Reading by some eminent reading theorists, which says that there are two big components in reading comprehension. One of them is word recognition. And our research demonstrates that you can teach word recognition, you can teach it very early, and that children at first and second language acquire it. That's the circle A. And this is a diagram that has two circles, A and B. And circle B is about language comprehension. And I want to emphasize that that's oral language comprehension. The processes involved in oral language comprehension are different. They're biologically driven. I'm quite convinced of the, that the evidence is strong that language acquisition is an instinct, that we humans are programmed for it, we're designed for it. And for young children especially, they're ready to absorb language and develop oral language. Written language is something we invented. We have to teach how it works and so on. So that distinction is very important. And I think this book by Steven Pinker on the language instinct, it's quite convincing that oral language is a natural process. But with written language, the word recognition part is very important, but one cannot neglect the oral language aspect. And so that in a rich literacy diet, there has to be lots of those very important oral language food groups, vocabulary development, development of syntax and so on, and lots of expressive use of language that will enrich that language part. Otherwise, you will find what's been found in studies over the years, that by grade three or grade four, even though you had this wonderful word recognition, it levels off or even goes down. This isn't just for second language children. Children who are linguistically impoverished, wherever they're coming from, will not progress in their reading comprehension unless they have that rich language development. I'll finish there.
By telling you something of the situation that we have in Canada. In Toronto and Vancouver, two of our largest cities, almost 60% of the children come in without, to school, without speaking any English. So they are ESL, English as a second language. Our most common languages are Cantonese and the other Asian languages. The Indian languages, especially Punjabi, are second, and the third are, is Spanish. We have a variety of other languages in the Vancouver system. The children speak one of 141 different languages. If you want to know the reason for this situation, Canada has had a fairly open immigration policy. It also has a very strong political refugee claimant policy, so that we have people from all over the world, but particularly from countries where there is political upheaval. So this is the situation that we face in our school systems, that the children come into kindergarten when they are approximately five years old, and in many cases, know So we are faced with the issue of how to teach them. Our guiding philosophy is the very, the importance of phonological processing for learning to read the English language. And to show you how this works, I'm going to put up two lists of words. I want you, these are English words, and I want you to read the list to yourself and think about the processes that you've used in reading them. So this is the first list of words. So just read it to yourself, think about how you, what the processes you used. Okay. This is the second list of words. These are real English words. I think probably most of you have not seen them before. They are, as I say, very rare words. But you used different processes to read these words. The first list, you probably just looked at the word and knew what it was. They are high-frequency familiar words. This second list, you had to use your phonological skills. That's the only way to read this. You broke it down into pieces, you gave the pronunciation of each of the sounds, and you were able to arrive at the pronunciation of the word. We don't have time for me to tell you the meaning of all these words, but the one at the bottom, grok, is a useful word. It means to stand around silently, watching people eat, hoping that they will ask you to join them. So next time you're waiting in line in a crowded restaurant, you'll have a word for that situation. But the point is that you need to use your phonological skills in order to read that word. So obviously, we want to teach children phonological skills. That is not all we teach them. We work, as you will see, on vocabulary and syntax, grammar. All these are important also. But the key for learning to read English are the phonological skills. The first thing that we do when children enter kindergarten, and we don't do this uniformly, but in some of the districts that I work in, this is, these are the procedures that we use. We assess the children's phonological awareness skills. And we do this for all the children, whether they have English as a first language or English as a second language. We use a variety of tests and tasks to do this, and I'll show you some of them. The first one is rhyme detection. Here, we say to the children, and by the way, these tests are administered individually. In some cases, the teachers are trained to do them. We have learning assistance teachers. In some cases, they're trained to do it. So that, I think the best situation is if it can be worked out, and it's often very difficult for the teachers to do them, to gain an awareness of the levels of skills of their children. So here, I'm just going to show you some of the tasks that we use. But this is rhyme detection, very important for understanding the sound structure of the language. So we, in this case, we have picture supports. This is a cat. This is a fish. This is a gun. And this is a hat, which sounds the same as cat. And we go through a procedure to make sure that the child understands what the rhyme means. We often don't use the word rhyme, because many five-year-olds don't know that word. But they certainly, the ones who don't have problems can understand when two words sound the same. We also look at their awareness of the syllables in the language, a task we call syllable identification. This is a picture of a rabbit. I will say part of the word, and you finish it for me. Rat, and the children have to say bit. And the idea is, can they break the stream of language into pieces? This is the fundamental skill that you need, one of the fundamental skills, in order to, to be able to associate letters with sounds. First, you have to be able to perceive the sound structure of the word and the language as a whole. What I just showed you with syllables, phonemes are parts of syllables, individual sounds. So we show them a picture of a watch, and we say, I'm going to say part of this word. I want you to finish it for me. Wah, and they have to say this final phoneme of the word. Now, things get a little harder. In order to be able to break the sound into pieces, you have to be able to delete part of the word. Okay? This is a picture of a bus. Say bus without the buh. And so they have to be able to say part of the word. In other words, break it down into pieces. We can delete the initial part, the first part of it, or the final part. Say bus without the s, and they have to be able to say that part of the word. As I say, there are other aspects, other tasks that we find that predict which children will have difficulty with reading and language. One of these is letter knowledge. So we just ask them, not the sounds, but to see if they know the names of the letters. All of these skills by themselves are important, but they're important as a whole also to predict which children are likely to have difficulties. There's also some facility with language that's required. And this is a task that we use that's called rapid naming. So the children have to name these pictures. You see, they're very simple pictures, one-syllable words. And they have to name them as quickly as they can. And the idea is, first of all, it's simple vocabulary, but it's also, how quickly can you retrieve the name of a word? In order to be able to read efficiently, you have to be able to retrieve language. And so this is a very important component skill in reading. We also test their knowledge, and this is one particular task that the children like, of what we call environmental print. So they see at various times familiar logos, in this case McDonald's, Pepsi. Then they see the word written in the same script, the same font that it would be, but without the picture. And then at other times, just the word, without any of the picture or the print cues to it other than the words. So we want to see what children know about print in their environment. And we think, again, this is one important step in learning to read. I'll just show you some of the other logos that we use. We don't expect the children to know all of these logos, but the important thing is the process. Can they isolate the picture from the word? Are they able to read the word without the picture? So we administer this battery of tasks that I've shown you, these phonological awareness and language awareness tasks to the children. And then for the children who are at risk, we have various programs, which I will show you, which are given to them typically in the context of the class, but there is some individual work with these children or work in small groups. And, but what I'd like to show you first is what happens to the children who have English as a second language on these various tasks compared to children who have English as a first language. The rhyme detection one that you saw, recognizing which words rhyme. The darker bars are the children who have English as a first language. And the lighter ones are the children who have English as a second language. You can see, this was done in November, December of kindergarten. So they've been exposed to English in the classroom for two to three months. So you can see that they have a problem with, for example, rhyme detection compared to the native speakers. But by the middle of grade one, they have caught up. To the children with English as a second language have caught up to the children who have English as a first language. We have one task where we ask them to repeat non-words, pseudo-words. This is a good test of your memory for language. And they have a problem in the beginning relative to children who have English as a first language, but again, by grade one, they're caught up. For the phoneme deletion, that was saying bus without the buh sound, again, the children with English as a second language have a problem relative to the native speakers in kindergarten, but with instruction, they catch up. And that, by the way, is true of all of the phonological awareness tasks. Phoneme identification, where they have to say, that, for example, was saying the ch in watch. Again, their, their problem with that, actually, they didn't have much of a problem with that compared to native speakers. So that is one of the easier skills. And, but, so that with some of the phoneme awareness, with most of the phoneme awareness tasks, with the naming task, for example, they do have a problem when they enter, but with good instruction, they catch up. And I'll tell you just a little bit about the instruction that they have. The program that we're using now, that we've just tested the effectiveness in Vancouver, is something called Launch Into Reading Success. It's a program developed by two teachers, Lorna Bennett and Pamela Ottley. And it takes all of the phonological awareness tasks and skills that you've heard about, rhyme, segmentation into syllables, segmentation into phonemes, blending, discrimination of phonemes. And it has a series of activities that teachers can do with children. This is intended for kindergarten and grade one. Goes through a series of activities. The children have some sheets that they can color, activities that they can do. And we've just, we just finished the assessment of this. We directed the program to the children at risk. The district that I worked in with this was North Vancouver. Approximately 30% ESL speakers. About 25% of the children in the district were at risk based on our assessment, the types of tasks that I just showed you. But about 50% of the ESL children were at risk at the end. We tested them in November. We just tested them in June after they had had this program, this phonological awareness training called Launch Into Reading Success. And all but 5% of them were no longer in the at-risk range. Now, we're going to be following these children consecutively to see how they develop reading skills. But basically, we turned around something that could have been a serious problem. Now, phonological skills are very important, but we also find with ESL children that vocabulary skills and syntactic grammatical skills are important. And I'll just give you a flavor of a program that we use to develop these skills. It's something called the Bridge Reading Program. We took the program, which was originally developed in Australia, and we added games and activities to it. Now, the program works like this. The children associate, learn the association between pictures and words. These are just some examples of it. And along with this goes a discussion of... And along with this goes a discussion of the word themselves, the concept. So I'm just showing you part of it. But for example, if the teacher was discussing vehicles and means of transportation, she would bring in a toy car, a toy bus, a toy boat. And there would be a discussion of these concepts and words. Now, particularly for children with ESL backgrounds, they have not been exposed to this vocabulary. This is not an issue for five- and six-year-old children from advantaged homes, all of whom would be familiar with these words. But remember, we're dealing with ESL populations and in some cases, children who, for whatever reason, have not been exposed to even this simple vocabulary in their homes. So they learn the association. This is done with cards and you'll see with books, the association between the picture and the word. Now, I want to stress, this goes along with the phonological awareness training. But we use this, as I say, to build vocabulary and you'll see grammatical skills. And we can even express some more abstract concepts. For example, prepositions and verbs, under, find, want. These are a little bit more difficult to express with concrete objects, but they're certainly the kinds of words that children need to learn. So they start out learning the picture and the word together at the same time. And there's a series of books. This is an example of, from the very first book. So they see a picture and they see the word paired with the icon for it. So in fact, they could read this page from the book, but they only have to read the pictures. That's the way we start out. And again, in the beginning, we have the pictures and the words together. And gradually, the pictures are withdrawn and they read some of the words. And some of the words have pictures to go with them. And here's another example. So in the beginning, there are a lot of supports for it. We then move to a situation where, in fact, there were few, if any, picture clues to the reading. Again, this is intended for children in grade one. We have research, a paper which I brought along, which has shown that this program is very successful for improving reading skills. Again, most successful when it's accompanied by phonological awareness training. There are a whole variety of activities that come with this program to train syntactic skills, a technique that we use called oral close, where the child reads a sentence. These are some examples. And they have to fill in the word in the sentence. We concentrate on verbs, which are very critical. And many ESL children have difficulty with verbs. As you may be aware, English verbs are, especially the frequently used verbs, are irregular. And that presents a problem. As you may know, the use of the articles, uh and the, is quite difficult for children who come from some of the Asian languages where there are no articles, particularly, well, the dialects of Chinese, for example. So that we want to concentrate on helping them learn that particular aspects of the language. So this is accompanied by games, by bingo games with words. And in the beginning, just with pictures. Then with the pictures and the words together. And then finally, with just the words. So this is very successful for teaching children with this kind of, in this kind of situation. We have found now in several studies, and I just will echo what Dale Willis has said, that phonological awareness training is absolutely critical for learning to read. It is, you must have these skills. As you saw with the difficult words that I asked you to read, you must have this. But you also have to develop the vocabulary and the syntax also because they're important. And what do we do for older children? Well, there are some systematic phonics instruction that we use. We, in most of the systems, that most of the school districts, at least in British Columbia, there is not a series of basal readers. The teachers are more or less left to their own devices to develop phonological programs. And this sometimes can create some difficulty because we haven't, in our teacher-training institutions, done enough, I think, to give teachers the tools to be able to teach reading. This is something that we're working on. We have developed one particular technique that we think is, again, just part of the picture, but useful for older children. And this was a technique that's developed by my colleague when I was at Toronto, Ivan Kalmar, who's both, well, he's an anthropologist and a linguist. But he has a particular interest in popular culture. And he has observed from his own children and watching what goes on that the format of the comic book is particularly compelling and interesting for children. So what he has done is developed a series of comic book which teach various phonological skills. And I brought one, I don't have overheads of it, but it's, this one is called Attack on the Ozone Layer. Takes place in the rainforest. And it's the conflict between the pinheads and the pineheads. And so you can get an idea of what sort of sound is being conveyed by that. In real comic books, you find that children actually can learn a lot of phonological skills because of all the sound effects that are there. And here, we have, for example, womb and swoon, a good way of, again, showing how one can delete sounds from language. So there are a variety of ways that we need to teach these phonological skills. And I think that it's most important that we, first of all, assess children at each point in time. There are various ways to do that. But it's absolutely critical that we assess their word recognition skills and their pseudo-word reading skills, the phonological skills and the word recognition skills. For the older children, because we have many children who come in when they're older because their parents immigrate to Canada at various points in their life, it takes them longer to catch up. And what Dale was saying about how the young brain is programmed to learn language, it's a particularly critical and important period. As you get older, it becomes more and more difficult. But it takes generally 18 months to two years for the children who come later to catch up and to have caught up to the children, to the native speakers. Most of them catch up. About 85% to 90% catch up without any difficulty. The children that we have studied who don't catch up, we've had the opportunity to study them, their skills in their first language, Arabic, Italian, Portuguese, Spanish, Cantonese, Mandarin, Japanese. We find that they have the same difficulties in their first language that they have in their second language. So there's a small percentage of them who do have language problems that require intensive remediation, but they have it in all languages. So they have a language processing problem, and it's independent of the language. So it's not learning of English that has created the problem. As I say, they have the same problem in their first language. So if it's done correctly, we're very optimistic about the success for these children. And again, if there's good systematic programming.
Mrs. Thompson and I were here exactly three years ago to ask for changes in the bilingual education codes and policies. You can be sure that we are delighted to be here under changed circumstances. We are here because we have been doing for more than 20 years exactly what Proposition 227 has directed the schools to do in educating children who come to us from homes which speak language other than English. We have always taught our children through an English immersion program. Our children have never been in segregated classrooms. Beginning in kindergarten, our children have been placed in mainstream classes taught in English. Each of our kindergarten classes has had a bilingual aide who has been there to assist the kids to succeed in a mainstream program, which is in English. Our children have never been in a sink-or-swim situation. We have always made sure that they will swim, and they have. The bilingual aide provides primary language support in the classroom when needed and provides translations for parent conferences and homeschool communication. We have found that, for the most part, our Hispanic kindergartens come to school expecting to and ready to learn English. Our parents have been very pleased with our program and have stayed with us because of our English immersion program. There have been cases where families have moved out of our school area and then have moved back because they liked our program better than the programs in the other schools. We have found that most of our kindergarten Hispanic children become fluent English speakers by the end of the year, which corroborates what our ladies from Canada have said. By the end of the kindergarten year, most of them successfully learn the sounds of the letters, consonants, and verbs, and can blend sounds to read most three-letter words with short vowels such as man, can, fan, pet, get, wet. These children go on to first grade and are taught in the same program as our English-only children. And as a group, they do as well and often better than our English-only students. At the end of the first-grade year, many of these children qualify for redesignation as FEP or Fluent English Proficient. Last year, our redesignation rate for the entire school, from LEP to FEP for all grades, was at 38% compared to 6% in the state. It would be higher, except there is no mechanism to redesignate kindergartens and first grades. Redesignation criteria are based on achievement test scores generally above the 50 percentile, as well as a language proficiency test score called the LOS, a language assessment scales, and a writing sample. Our redesignation test score requirements are well above the 36 percentile level, which the district requires. As a staff, we have discussed the phenomenon of our FEP students doing better than the English-only students. We have decided that our second-language children do so well because, one, they develop better listening skills because they need to, in order to understand what is being taught. And, two, because all of our teachers have been trained in language acquisition and English-language development techniques and strategies to meet the needs of our second-language students. We also have an articulated, which means written, English-language development curriculum for all of our LEP children at all grade levels. Our ELD program includes Edison Wesley's ELD, supplemented by many books, activities, and realia or objects. We have a language specialist who does all the assessment, plenty of the curriculum with the classroom teachers, and who teaches children in small groups in a pull-out program. Students participate in ELD classes at their appropriate proficiency level, pre-production, early production, speech emergence, and intermediate fluency. The children's progress is carefully monitored by the language specialist at regular intervals. And her findings are shared with teachers and parents. In addition, our bilingual aides also provide support in the content areas, example, social studies and science in the upper grades. Comparable books are available in primary language, if needed, for homework and additional support. This year, through the generosity of your former colleague, Mr. Jerry Hume, we participated in an experimental study using the Waterford Early Reading Program in two of our kindergarten classes. Mr. Hume wanted to find out if the use of this program would hasten the learning of English. The program claims to make up for 3,000 hours of pre-reading experiences that children need to become successful readers in the primary grades. For us, it has proved to be a godsend, especially to our kindergartens who are fortunate enough to be in the experimental group. Out of 40 kids in the experimental group, only two failed to meet the promotion requirements to first grade. In the control group, eight of 40 students failed to meet the promotion requirements. We are presently looking for an angel, or angels, anybody out there, who will gift all of our other sixth-grade kindergarten classes with this very expensive program. Finally, I have included our Stanford NINE scores of this year and our state accountability report, which returned into the state last November. In it, you will see that our English mainstream immersion program has been very successful. We think that our program can be replicated in any school which has the will to do so. And I will read you the scores because I don't have one of those things. Okay, this is the STAR scores, the Stanford. In the second grade, all of our students put together had a reading score of 60 percentile, a language score of 69 percentile, and a spelling score of 62 percentile, and a math score of 73 percent. and a math score of seventy-three percentile. Now, the FEP kids scored, second graders scored sixty-two percentile in reading, sixty-eight percentile in language, sixty-five percentile in Spanish, and seventy-seven percentile in math. As you see, there's very little difference. In the third grade, our children scored at the sixty percentile in reading, seventy-one percentile in language, and sixty-eight percentile in spelling, and eighty percentile in math. Our FEP kids scored at the sixty-one percentile in reading, seventy percentile in math, sixty-nine percentile in spelling, and eighty-one percentile in math. Our fourth-grade kids did not do as well. And that's one of the first things we're going to tackle when we get back to school. Our fourth-grade teachers and our fifth-grade teachers and our administrative staff will meet and plan strategies to make changes. In reading, the fourth-grader scored at the forty-five percentile; in language, at the fifty-nine percentile; in spelling, at the fifty-six percentile. Their math was at the fifty-seven percentile. FEP kids at the fourth-grade level, forty-six percentile in reading, sixty percentile in language, fifty-five percentile in spelling, and fifty-six percentile in math. Our fifth graders scored at the forty-eight percentile in reading, fifty-nine percentile in language, and forty-nine percentile in Spanish. Their math was at the fifty-four percentile. Our FEP kids in the fifth grade scored forty-nine percentile in reading, sixty percentile in language, forty-nine percentile in Spanish, and fifty-four percentile in math. For the state, we just figured out what percent of the kids were achieving at or above grade level in Language Arts, which is the combination of reading and language, and in math. Sixty-eight percent, sixty-eight percent of our second graders are at or above grade level in Language Arts. Seventy-four percent are at or above grade level in math. Third graders, seventy-three percent of our kids are at or above grade level in Language Arts, and eighty-six percent are at or above grade level in math. In the fourth grade, fifty-two percent of our kids are at or above grade level in Language Arts and sixty-three percent in math. And at the fifth grade, fifty-six percent of our kids are at or above grade level in Language Arts and fifty-one in math. So we think that our program has been quite successful. Like I said, we've been doing it for over twenty years. And what we do is not any different from what the ladies explained. In fact, Mrs. Thompson and I said it's almost as if we collaborated. We really didn't. What we do is just a whole lot of common sense. Thank you.
Next.
I'll sit right here. Calso is a kindergarten through fifth-grade elementary school this year. Last year, we had a sixth grade, so some of my report will reflect this. We're approximately fifty-five percent Latino and forty-five percent African-American. And we've always been an English-only school. For us, it's not difficult to teach the children who come to school speaking a language other than English to speak and read in English if he enters school early. The older the child is when he starts the process, the more difficult the task becomes. We've had to address the needs of three age groups of non-English-speaking children entering our school: the kindergartners, the primary children, and, as was alluded to, the children in the upper grades. Now, like Bennett Q., our kindergarten children are immediately immersed in the English-language training and are taught the district-adopted Language Arts program, which has a very strong emphasis on language development, phonemic awareness, and phonics. When I saw the Waterford program that was being piloted at her school by a miracle, I got it for all of my kindergartners. So we have three sets for all six kindergartens, and it has proved very effective. Now, in addition to the Waterford and the Standard Reading Program, we, at approximately the third week, we extend the school day by seventy minutes for our Spanish-speaking kindergartners and other children who need help in language development. During this seventy-minute period, the children are given further instruction in the English language in small groups. But since we are a multi-track, year-round school, our children have a one-month vacation every three months to assure that children are never without hearing and using English language for a prolonged period. We invite all kindergartners back during their vacation for a daily seventy-minute language intercession taught by an on-track teacher. So by extending the day and by providing intercession classes, Latino children have the opportunity for approximately two hundred extra hours of additional language instruction during their initial English-language learning. And I cannot resist, because it is a pet want of mine, when the first speaker mentioned a junior kindergarten. If we had a four-year-old kindergarten and a five-year-old kindergarten, we wouldn't have a problem. In grades one, two, and three, we continue the strong emphasis on reading and language development for all children. Since the large majority of our English-only children have limited vocabularies and language skills, there are daily instructions in oral and written language as part of the curriculum for every child in these grades. This includes phonics, systematic drill in grammar, daily writing, and literature. Now, to get to the new children entering at the primary grades. All children who enter our school are assessed by me before they're placed in classes. Obviously, children entering at grades one, two, and three who neither read nor speak English need extra help. These children are placed in a special language-reading class for two and a half hours on a daily basis and given systematic instruction in phonics. This special help continues until the child can read and cope with the demands of a regular class. There are no breaks for intercessions, and the instruction continues without interruptions. The younger the child, the smaller the amount of time needed in this program, other things being equal. Many of the kindergarten, or first graders, exit the program within the first three months. Of course, all of these first grades, second grades and third grades, are brought back for intercessions at our school. That goes without saying. Now, the grades four, five, and six, the hardest part of an English-only school is teaching the non-English children who enter at grades four, five, and six. We find that, as a rule, the newly arrived immigrant children entering Calso in these grades who read well in their native language transition into English and English reading much more rapidly than the children coming to us from bilingual programs in the United States. I'm not going to be popular for saying that, but that is what we have observed. As soon as the immigrant child gets an elementary grasp of the language and is drilled in vowels, certain elements in phonics and grammatical structure, his reading skills transfer into the new language, and reading actually becomes another tool leading to English proficiency. Sadly, prior to this year, we have had one language specialist whose job it is to teach these older children to speak and read English and to quickly integrate them into the regular classrooms. She has observed, or she has told me, that she thinks the reason that the immigrant children transition faster is the skills are more embedded than they are with the children that we get from the United States. At present, we have no, we do not have her working with older children because we only get four to six of these children entering our school per year, and we can no longer afford to have a specialist for this small a number. However, you may be interested in the program as it existed for many years. We were fortunate to have the ideal person for this job. She was a reading specialist. She spoke some Spanish, and she possessed a great versatility in the use of the English language. All entering non-English-speaking children were assigned to a regular class. The specialist assessed their English and Spanish language and their Spanish reading skills. She and an aide worked with the children for approximately two and a half hours each morning. There was intensive teaching using many materials, including actual replicas of many objects, such as foods, animals. She used pictures and other materials. But we find that there are few appropriate materials for this age group. So the teacher had to create many materials and to teach innovative lessons. They're both systematic buildup of oral and written language. There was drill in learning the names of common nouns, use of verbs, adjective adverbs, and so forth. Time was spent on common phrases and idiomatic expressions. After the initial assessment and a few days in the class, each child was introduced to a systematic phonics-reading program, which is a very sterile, dry, sullen reading program. But they could progress at their own rate, and as the child mastered some of the critical components of the vowels and some basic sight words, he was placed in a reading group with other children. And as the children became more proficient, they joined existing reading groups in regular classrooms. The time needed in this special reading, a special situation for intensive training varied with the background and learning rate of the children. But as it has been verified this morning, it usually lasted from one to two years. And as stated, there were a certain percentage, a small percentage of children who had intense difficulty in learning the English language. But that percentage was small. After the reading-language class, the children returned to their assigned regular classes for math and science, with each one assigned a bilingual child to help. In the afternoon, these separate-grade children returned to the language teacher for social studies for about an hour. Since we had fourth, fifth, and sixth-grade children, and the class size varied from around fifteen to twenty, we decided we could not cover all of the social studies. So we decided to teach American history to the entire group. A text was chosen that covered the same material as the adopted fifth-grade text. But it was much richer in authentic illustrations. There was much less writing on the page. It's published by Ballard Ty of Brea, California. It's not watered down at all. The class was conducted in English, but the clarifications were given in Spanish. Material was covered slowly and in depth. There was a great deal of written stories and charts made by the teachers, and many choral readings and group and individual writings done by the children. Memorization of facts and events occurred. The children enjoyed the social studies class tremendously, and they emerged with a good grounding in historical events and important people in American history. The class also served as an introduction to many events, holidays, and national figures important to our society. In summary, all entering non-English children are immediately given intensive help in learning English language and taught reading programs which incorporate systematic phonics in the initial stage. A comparison of our scores, so there's little difference for those who enter as English-only and for those who enter as only Spanish-speaking, particularly if the children enter in the primary grades. For example, on the recent Stanford test, we had a hundred and thirteen second graders. Of these, fifty-six were classified as limited English proficiency. The reading and language scores for both groups were identical, around the fifty-six in CE, with the limited English-speaking showing three-tenths of a percent advantage in language. Also, it was interesting to us, approximately two to three years, we did a study of the ability of our older children to read Spanish. We only tested those children who had entered Calso before the third grade. We found that fifty percent of our children could read Spanish at grade level or above. The parents at that school have commissioned us to teach English, and many of them, we recommend, and they have followed through, teach the child Spanish reading at home, beginning at the end of the second grades, where we have introduced, and the child is expected to have mastered all of the vowels in English.
I'm glad to see that we're all on the same page. I represent middle school. And as you have all said, the older the child, the more difficult it is to teach reading. Let me give you a little bit of background. I have been working with ELL, English Language Learners, now for the major part of sixteen years. When these children entered my classroom a few years ago, they were coming in from outside of the United States with little or no formal education. That trend has changed. The children that I am getting now have been our native-born. They have had seven years of schooling, and they're still entering seventh grade, and they can't read. I have, at that grade, there really isn't a whole lot of programs, or there weren't any programs out there to teach reading. What I was doing in my classrooms was trying to piece a program that made sense to me in order to teach students that spoke no English at all or now the students that are coming to me that can't read. There was really nothing there for me. I had no materials. There were no books, obviously, that I could give them. And last year, things changed for me. I was introduced to a program, Language Curriculum, the author being Dr. Jane Green. And I went through intensive, five-days of training. When I first went there, I was not very optimistic because I have spent a lot of years putting my own materials together. As I sat through this training, I began to recognize pieces of the work that I was doing in the classroom. This program is very systematic. It has all of the components that were mentioned here earlier. I fell in love with the program because it teaches from the part to the whole, just like the elementary people that were up here. The biggest problem that I had is getting the students to buy into the program. At that age, they are turned off to school. They have been failing for so many years that they're not convinced that they can learn anymore. What I like about the program is that it is direct, structured, language instruction. And let me rephrase that. This is a stand-up-and-teach program. It has, it starts with phonological awareness. It has all of the components: phoneme deletion, substitution, sound letter recognition, relationship. And it deals, again, from the part to the whole. I had, in order to implement the program, there were many problems for me in that, being in secondary, and also, we have schools that we feed to into high school. We are not trained, or teachers are not trained, to teach reading at that level. What has made the program work for me is that we have had coaching, ongoing coaching, where Dr. Green has come in twice a month to help teachers implement the program. I began to recognize the significance of all of the blocks in the program. Each unit builds on the other. It has all of the components with phonological awareness, lithography, grammar, semantics, composition, non-phonetic words. And the most important is the And the most important is the controlled reading. One of the things that I haven't heard here are, the programs that have been mentioned here are readers. We have the controlled reading, so that when we are teaching the sounds, when we are putting those sounds together to form words, students can practice those sounds with the readers. In presenting, even though the skills are very low for this age group, seventh and eighth graders, we can teach the higher-level skills because now they are working with a text that they can read. For example, the readers. We can teach students to identify the types of questions asked, from the literal to the interpretive, the critical, the creative. We can teach them to question the author because now they have something that they can work with. When I started with the program, I worked harder than I have ever worked at this level. By the sixth, by the time that I implemented the sixth unit, I wanted to quit. It was just a lot of work. Realize that at this level, there aren't a lot of activities, there are not a lot of readers, there are not a lot of materials that you can bring in to supplement. This program is a guide. Teachers have to bring in all of the other parts to make it work. So what I did is I decided to ask my students to write, without putting their names on their paper, how they felt about this program, because my body language was giving them another message. You know, I should be in elementary, they should know how to read by the time they get here, we should be reading Where the Red Fern Grows, and I am reading Run, Tam, Run. So I'm going to share with you a couple of the letters that they wrote. And again, these are beginning, or very limited, English language learners. Where is the little button for this? Is this right, Sada? And this is exactly as the student wrote it, and let me read it to you. This program that Mrs. Bautista is giving us really helped me read and write better because I used, to not use periods, question marks, commas, or anything, because I didn't know how to use them. Or the reading, I used to read and don't get what I read, but now I'm getting better and better at everything. And now in all my classes, I use words people don't know, and they tell me, you don't belong in the dragon house. That makes me feel happy and proud. The dragon house is where I work. This is where we house all of our English language learners. Okay, the second one. The program that my class are doing, it helped me learn a lot. When my class first started the program, I thought it was a little stupid. Notice the T at the end. Because we are seventh and eighth grade, why are we still learning this stuff? But I was wrong about this program. I start to learn more things like phonemes, graphemes, digraphs, and blends. The program that my class are doing, I also learned that some words can change and some don't change spelling. So I learn a lot of things from this program. Okay, again, these are ELL students. I didn't want to stand here and give you all of the parts to the program because they have been mentioned with the younger children. It is a structured, directed teaching program. It has all of the components, composition, grammar. The units build on one another, and I like the term that Dr. Willow used when she said the balanced diet. Because of the different languages and the age of the students that I am getting, for example, some of the Asian languages do, they don't see, they don't say the S's at the ends of words. So you just got to give them a second serving and a third until they get it. Some of my languages do not deal with the past tense because they don't have the past tense. And again, you just keep rehearsing, giving them practice, and the students are learning. I cannot give you statistics on how they did because we've implemented this program for half a year. I saw the change in my students. I saw the change in myself when they finally started to understand, begin to read, volunteer to answer questions, just the way that they carry themselves. I'm really excited about next year when we begin the program for the first full year, and then we will be collecting data at that, at that grade level. I am fortunate to work in a district now where we have two middle schools that are participating in the language curriculum, and there are three levels in this curriculum, and we feed into the high school. There are two high schools that are partners with us, and because we only have the students for two years, we will probably be able to implement Level One, and with the very beginners, the non-English speakers, it will probably take one whole year to implement Level One. And we'll feed into the high school where they will probably pick up the students in the middle of Level Two, and by the time that they get through Level Three, they should be reading at the ninth grade level. But all of my students are succeeding. And again, as someone mentioned here, it depends on the literacy in their own language, how quickly they move. But you have to work with it, you have to rehearse, you have to teach. This is not a program where they do projects and they learn on their own. This is very directed teaching, where you bring in all your resources, you're creative, and you breathe, breathe life into the program. Because obviously, at that level, and when you begin with phoneme awareness, grapheme, phoneme relationship, the reading is, is not totally, I mean terribly exciting. So the teacher has to do the work to make the program come to life. But in half a year, I've seen tremendous changes in my students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Patty Abarka. I'm a third-grade bilingual classroom teacher in the Los Angeles Unified School District and a curriculum commissioner. I have been a bilingual teacher for eighteen years, and before then, I taught an English-only classroom for five years. I believe in bilingual education because I know it can work. A good English language development program should incorporate literature and conversation as two elements among many. But the program and lessons to the children must not be guided by them. Furthermore, teachers must be given a curriculum to follow soon. Please don't make thousands of teachers develop their own individual English language development curriculum. As an experienced teacher of English language learners, I would like an effective English language development curriculum for California schools to include the following. Sequential and systematic oral language lessons that begin with survival skills and phrases. English vocabulary, sounds, and letters that are not only appropriate, are not only appropriate, but vital to be introduced systematically and explicitly from the beginning, particularly once the children have learned survival phrases. The vocabulary, sounds, and letters should be learned side by side with visuals. One can use an eclectic approach by incorporating a variety of strategies and materials, such as direct instruction, the audio-lingual approach, conversation, sentence patterns, nursery rhymes, poetry, games, puppets, pictures, Ria Lai, and so on. Grammar is a positive, critical element of learning a language. It must be recognized as such in the teaching of ESL and language arts in general. Grammar has been demeaned and vilified by the whole language folk who have molded the English as a language, second language, and foreign language pedagogy for the last fifteen years. Systematic spelling instruction should be another essential part from grade two on. Technology should be integrated throughout. There are many excellent computer programs already available, in addition, audio and videotapes, along with closed caption educational television at visual and auditory modalities. Besides the curriculum, the advisory should also address other issues. One such issue is related to schools that are predominantly limited English proficient. The majority of kindergarten through eighth-grade students in the Los Angeles Unified School District are English language learners. My school district has about approximately one-fourth of all the LEP students in this state. My own school has eighty-five percent English language population. These children are going to find it more difficult to achieve fluency in one year because of the limited number of English language models in their daily experience. Once the LEP student completes their first year of structured English immersion, they will continue to need language support. For example, fluent English students have difficulty understanding word problems. Problem solving is a killer in whatever language. But the second language, it is. But the second language learner will have to deal with understanding not only the problem, but also the language of the problem. Please provide a safety net of continued language support for the second language learners beyond the first year of English immersion, and this recommendation could also be covered in the advisory. The changeover is going to cost a lot of money. Money is needed simply to purchase new materials that will replace the Spanish additions. For my school alone, we are talking four hundred thousand dollars if all English language learners go into immersion. The money is just for the replacement, replacement of textbooks and not even to purchase additional materials, not for more ESL kits or anything like that, simply to replace what we already have. We will also need a budget for staff development. Both bilingual and monolingual teachers need to be trained to teach English immersion, as we've never done it before. In addition, for the last fifteen years or so, we have been trained to use only whole language techniques. We were told never to show the English vocabulary along with a picture of discussion. We were told not to give corrected feedback. We were told that the ESL lessons are related to thematic units being developed in the classroom. I have sat through more than one staff development where we were told to use English literature as the basis of the program. And current ESL materials follow the 1987 Whole Language-Based English Language Arts Framework. In California, we have experienced the failure of the whole language integrated instruction. I sincerely hope that for the sake of the English language learners, we can return to a more common-sense, organized teaching methodology. This methodology must recognize the importance of all elements of the English language while utilizing a variety of strategies. A structured English immersion program must provide the English language learner the opportunity to master both conversational English and academic English. For the English language development curriculum to be successful, the instruction given must be organized around the purposeful teaching of English language vocabulary, its phonological base, and English language structure. It is vital that the State Board of Education furnish directives and issue an advisory that the teaching methods and instructional materials utilized in the structured English immersion classrooms reflect that purpose. And thank you very much for letting me participate in this today. I'm glad it's over.
I'm from the Elk Grove School District, which is just down the road, South Sacramento County. And basically, what I'm going to tell you about today is what we do in our district for second language learners, why we do it, and what some of our outcomes have been from preschool all the way through grade twelve. But I want you to, you have a packet of materials that you'll be able to peruse, and I have some overheads. I'm not sure how, how clear they're going to be, but I'll use them somewhat anyway. We have forty-two thousand students in our schools. Seventy-five hundred of these students, or nineteen percent, are English language learners who have not yet achieved fluency in English. I think you know that we have a rapidly growing school district at about two thousand students a year, two hundred, two, yes, two thousand students a year, and we're building two to three schools a year. So a significant part of that population is second language learners, and they represent more than sixty different languages. So we're a little different than a lot of school districts in the state. Vietnamese was our number-one language for many years. Spanish is creeping up there now and is, is taking over the, the top slot. But two-thirds of our students speak an Asian or Pacific language, and we have twenty-two different Asian or Pacific languages. Our major languages are Cantonese and Hmong, Filipino, Hindi, Punjabi, Mian, Russian, and Cambodian. So you can see there's a great deal of diversity there. And all of our schools have language minority students, and most of these students are still learning English. You have this chart in your packets, and I'm not sure how it's going to show up here, but this is just a part of the chart. We do this twice a year. It extends out to another dimension which you have, but we do it for the language census in the spring, and then in the fall, we have to redo it because of all the changes that we have. And you can see from that that there's a great amount of diversity. At half of our district's forty-three schools, between twenty-five and thirty-five percent of the students are English language learners. And at one high school, we have sixty percent of the students who are either fluent or limited English students. This diversity of languages and the shortage of teachers who speak the languages of the students, and the huge increases over the past fifteen years, have made it difficult and impossible to provide bilingual instruction for students. The challenge became even greater in the 1980s when we began to place our elementary and middle school students on multi-track, year-round schedules because of the need for more classroom space. And although efforts were intensified to hire bilingual teachers and train existing teachers in English language development, we found ourselves playing an endless game of catch-up. As more and more limited English students enrolled in our schools, we realized we would probably never find enough bilingual teachers to meet our needs. So we continued to hire bilingual associates, paraprofessionals, to assist students as they studied in content areas. And we expanded our training of teachers so they would know how to teach children who were learning English. And most important, we provided supportive, nurturing environments for learning in school and in other settings. By the early 1990s, we began to notice an interesting trend in the academic performance of our students. Students who had been considered limited English proficient only a few years before were beginning to appear in large numbers as the top students on our honor rolls and in our graduating classes. So we decided it was time to abandon the plan to remedy the shortage of bilingual teachers and attempt the local flexibility option to meet the compliance requirements for limited English students. We have qualified for Option One for the past three years based on our student outcomes. We have had impressive results with our fluent English proficient students, and these were basically students who were limited when they entered our schools. And you can see from this what, how they score in reading, language, and math, not only above the district average, but also above the fiftieth percentile. This is the California Achievement Test that we give annually in our district. We've also seen excellent results and achievement from students that we had in preschool who were now in the grades one, two, and three, who were basically in immersion classes in the preschool and Head Start and state preschool and in our Title I preschool. And we are seeing a consistent gains from, in many areas, from our English learners who attend after-school extended-day programs, such as our Twilight Program, and of course, intercession programs where they receive additional instruction and tutoring. There are five components to what we do in Elk Grove. High expectations from teachers and from parents for learning English and for meeting grade-level requirements in curriculum and instruction. And along with that, intensive primary language support in content areas from highly qualified paraprofessionals. The coordinated efforts on behalf of English language learners between schools and district departments in regard to curriculum, research, evaluation, special education, parent involvement, and other areas. Extensive opportunities for teacher training and English language development, as well as teachers learning other languages. Many programs for parent involvement, including literacy classes, adult education, and other forms of parent education. And a district-wide appreciation for cultural understanding and language learning, and providing many opportunities for students to acquire proficiency in languages. And I would like to address each of these. First of all, high expectations from teachers and parents for meeting grade-level requirements for curriculum and instruction, along with intensive primary language support in content areas. Elk Grove's goal for curriculum and instruction is to accelerate the ability of students to acquire English as quickly as possible so they can become fluent. And to accomplish this, students from preschool and kindergarten through grade six are enrolled in immersion classes and mainstream classes. At the secondary level, grade seven through twelve, the most limited students are placed in designated English language development classes for part of their school day, which could be as much as four periods, and mainstream for subjects such as art and physical education. Students who are more proficient in English are mainstream progressively as they are able to as they are able to handle core subjects. And at all grades, primary language support is provided for the most needy students by qualified bilingual associates who work with the students individually and in small groups, mostly in the classroom, in work groups, before and after school, in the Twilight Learning Center, and what they do is to pre-teach the lessons, to work on vocabulary, and explaining the difficult concepts. The curriculum for English language learners is based on Elk Grove Standards and Benchmarks, which were developed over a two-year time period. After reviewing documents, draft documents from the California Department of Education and other districts, six areas were identified to cover reading, writing, speaking, listening, links to content areas, and learning beyond the classroom. These areas spiral through the grade-level groups of K-two, three, six, and seven, twelve, and the competency of newcomer, beginner, early intermediate, early advanced, and advanced proficiency levels. And you have those standards in your packets. They overlap as much as possible with the standards and benchmarks of other curricular areas in order to integrate the English language learners into the mainstream right from the start. For example, an early intermediate student in grade, in second grade might participate in a shared reading lesson in which she individually reads some high-frequency words, and as the class sequences the story, she learns speaking vocabulary such as first, next, and last. With guidance, she then writes three short but complete sentences to retell the story. She has thus addressed the standards for listening, speaking, reading, and writing for level-appropriate English language development. And she has also participated in mainstream instruction that addresses the standards required of all students at that grade level. We recognize that students who are acquiring English normally develop listening before speaking, and that both these skills precede reading and writing. A key factor, however, for Elk Grove students is that reading and writing instruction is not postponed until students achieve conversational proficiency. More than half of our language minority students enter district schools in kindergarten or first grade, and it is in these grades that early language and literacy development are strongly emphasized in every classroom. It usually takes one to three years for students to become conversational in English, and we have not been willing to delay beginning reading instruction until third or fourth grade when mainstream classes begin to focus on content area reading and content-specific knowledge. We have found that much language acquisition takes place in the context of reading and that there are key windows for developing phonemic awareness and sound-symbol correspondence. These are not opportunities we want to miss. The second component of what we do is the coordinated efforts on behalf of English language learners between schools and district departments in regard to curriculum, instruction, assessment, staff development, research, and evaluation, special education, parent involvement in the elementary and secondary divisions. What I am sharing with you today was prepared with, not just with me, but with Sue Stickel, who's the Director of Instructional Services, and with other department people because basically it is a coordinated approach. Our schools receive support from all of these departments so they can better serve English language learners. And the student performance indicators are disaggregated by language, by oral, by English, oral English proficiency levels and the length of time that students have been in, in the United States so that site personnel can determine the instructional strategies that work the best. Because it certainly isn't a one, one, one solution for all students. I kind of like the diet idea too, that you need different things for different kids, and I think we've been able to do that. The efforts to improve student achievement are networked through the English Language Development Steering Committee, and input from teachers and site staff influence modifications and changes to curriculum and instruction such as textbook adoptions, development, and implementation of grade-level standards. The training of teachers is done district-wide and at school sites to accommodate site year-round schedules. And translations of material sent to parents are provided in as many as nine different languages, and interpreters are scheduled for parent meetings and student registrations. The funds from categorical programs, which come out of the office that I manage, are coordinated with district funds to maximize school budgets for student, student needs, and the program for English language learners is part of each school's academic improvement plan. The third area is the extensive opportunities for teacher training in English language development and the classes provided in languages such as Spanish, Vietnamese, and Russian for teachers. Elk Grove teachers participate in an intensive program of professional development. Included in the yearly offerings are many opportunities for English language development as well as opportunities to learn the languages of the students. In the past eight years, we've had hundreds of teachers enrolled in after-school and Saturday classes to improve their strategies and instructional practices for working with language minority students. Prior to nineteen ninety-five, many teachers earned the Language Development Specialist Certificate through classes funded by the district, and since then, more than three hundred teachers have been clad in SB nineteen sixty-nine certified through their participation in district-funded classes. There's been no cost to teachers for this training, they've received district salary credit for their efforts, and additional assistance is also provided to them at the elementary level by site-based reading specialists who, in their leadership roles, offer demonstration lessons, peer coaching, and other support to teachers. Fourth component is that many programs for parent involvement, including literacy classes, adult education, and parent education. Parents of language minority students are encouraged to be involved with their children in a variety of ways. I'm forgetting to put these on here. Okay. One of these is the successful after-school evening program that we call the Twilight Family Learning Center, which is attended by more than six hundred limited English proficient students and their parents. Located at four large Title One schools, the Twilight Program serves large numbers of immigrant students and newcomer families, goes from four o'clock until seven o'clock, three nights a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We welcome you to come and visit. Twilight has three components for second language learners. Preschool to help children with readiness for kindergarten. Remember, we're crowded, so we use the kindergarten classrooms in the evening for preschool. Homework help and tutoring for students, usually in the school's multipurpose room, probably a hundred and a hundred fifty kids there every night. And workshops and classes for parents. The family literacy classes, such as adult and adult education English classes and Parent Institute classes, were all designed to meet the needs of parents who are learning English and want to know how they can help their children. A full range of translation and interpreting services are provided for parents in many languages so they can better understand school services, their children's academic progress, and so they can provide support and assistance to promote learning. The fifth component is the district-wide appreciation for cultural understanding and language learning and providing many opportunities for students to acquire proficiencies in languages. In Elk Grove, we believe there's a genuine appreciation and valuing of cultures and languages that can be seen in the emphasis throughout the district on providing opportunities for multi... Where am I here? Lost a page, here we go. Well, I'll just have to talk about it then. I'm missing a page, so this goes without the, what you have in front of you. But you know, you perhaps know about our Japanese language program, which we anticipate will be all the way from kindergarten all the way through the schools. We'll be starting it this fall, we expect to do the same with Mandarin Chinese. We also have a Spanish language program that goes from kindergarten all the way through. So I believe that there, there's a feeling throughout the, the district that languages are important and that it is important for children to acquire languages, and the younger they are, the better they can learn languages. We think it's absolutely essential that if students are going to function and, to live in this country and to function effectively, they need to know English. But we also feel that it's equally important that if children are going to live well and function effectively in the world, they need to know many languages. So that concludes my presentation. I thank you very much for having had this opportunity to speak to you.